Sure, you could pass those around. You want to stand at the podium, Colin, so we can get you on camera and... And Colin, if you could share just a little bit about your project with the board?
So my project was at the Schlitz-Otavon Nature Center. I worked with their raptor program. I found out about them, if you ever go to state fairs, to the We Energy, they always put on a big show. So I helped one of their birds, Loki. He was one of their newer birds and was currently living in a PVC pipe enclosure. So I thought that I would give him a new enclosure that's really nice and sturdy, that will last them a very long time. So I ended up doing him, building him one of those. I'd say it was probably about the size of that table, just about twice as tall. So it was a pretty big project. It took about six, seven hours to complete. I also built them eight five-foot-tall bird perches, because they go around to like schools, along with at weddings and stuff, and they put on shows and display all of their birds. So that was my project. I ended up raising about $700 for my project. A bulk of it, actually, I helped at the middle school musical last spring, and I set up a table asking for donations, and that actually raised me $300. So that was almost half of my fundraising done over the course of three nights.
How did you raise the rest?
The rest of it, I went around to local businesses, like mostly down High 100, asking for donations.
Is it on, is it a nature area now, the cage?
Yeah, it's, it's actually at their private facility for like, because if the birds, like, they're not for public viewing, really, because they gotta have their own little relaxation time, so.
That's great. So you're looking to do something in conservation? I know you have the World Conservation Award and other badges associated with it.
Yeah, this right here is the World Conservation Award. So that involves EVS, soil and water conservation, and some other requirements, like having a set amount of service hours. Eagle Scout project, I think, brought in 300 hours of service work, so. I had my dad and mom help me a lot. My dad really helped me with coming up with all the designs for the enclosure, so.
That's great. Anybody else have any questions?
Or look happy?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, yeah, that's great, thank you. I still got to see the eagle. I gotta see the other bryant.
Oh, yes. And Spencer Jones is with us. Spencer, if you want to come up? And you can share with us the same as Colin did, what your project was.
So my eagle project was for the VA hospital. I built eight platforms, a step and a ramp, for various events that they hold throughout the year. The point of it was so that they could be arranged in variable ways, so that the eight stages are identical, they can be stacked on top of each other. They are four feet by eight feet in dimensions. So it's just variability and things like that. The total cost was about $750. My donors included Lowe's, Lions Club, and the Rotary Club, as well as my own family.
They made out of wood?
Yes, they're made out of wood. They're going to be painted and stored inside, so treated wood was not used for that.
What's this, the last picture in your, they couldn't find a connection to hook up to the computer, but
Oh, okay.
That last picture, you could explain what that is?
What's the last picture?
Is that stacks, when you stick?
So the picture just depicts the entirety of everything that was built, including leftover wood and resources. That was pretty much it.
How long did it take you?
Building took about six to eight hours, I think. I can't remember specifics. But the entirety of the design process, which I used a computer-aided design program to design everything, total time spent was around 48 hours doing all that.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, congrats to both boys, and it's really exciting to see the scouting program with students here at Whitnell participating in scouting. It seems like it's just a great extension of education, so. Thanks for coming in. And applause.
Okay, thank you both. On to B, Hales Corners Elementary PTO donations.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to showcase their PTO and their continued support of our students. You're gonna notice a little typo there, I'm just looking at the board information. It says 2018-19, it's rather 2019-20. So it's this current school year. So you have this as, as part of the information, you've already probably reviewed, but basically, all the money that comes into, that the PTO brings in, is used some way, shape, or form for kids. The field trips are really, really appreciated, that, that additional dollars, so that we can take some more expensive trips that would really be potentially a hardship for some families to afford. Our fourth graders go to Madison every year, so this extra money really helps. And some of those other arts experiences, to the various first stage and MSO, things like that, sometimes are a little pricier, so that really does help us take the learning beyond the four walls of the classroom. Curriculum programs are actually what we like to call field trips on-site. And so each grade level gets a certain amount of money, $750, and they bring programs in that support the curriculum. So whether it's, as Colin was talking about Schlitz-Otavon, we bring programming in, like Schlitz-Otavon, into our building, and kids get to then experience that on-site. So we don't have the downtime. I mean, it's one of those types of things where you can leave the classroom, head over and have the program, and then back to the classroom. Artists in Residence, $6,000 each year. And each year, we've been able to bring, you name it, authors, artists, musicians, just dance groups, a whole host of, of artists, programming to, to the kids. Staff appreciation is a really big deal. They bring, you know, lunches for our staff on those parent-teacher conference evenings. They also, in the previous item, they bring those school-supported, or teacher-supported, resources. So teachers buy a lot of out-of-pocket purchasing for their classroom, and so they have the teachers turn in receipts and allow that, that to be, some of that to be reimbursed. And this year, they determined with the Scolastic Funds, we do the book drive, or the book fair each fall. This year, they decided to turn that money back around to the classroom. So each classroom teacher was able to purchase $90 worth of classroom books. And they do something different with that each year, but that's what we were doing this year. So our PTO not only beyond monetary gifts, it's just that gift of time. Just run all of the events, organize the events, just be there thinking ahead, like, what is, what couldn't really contribute to a wonderful, well-rounded experience for the kids, so. And I don't have to talk too much more about PTO, because I'm sure you're all a part of PTO yourselves. So you know what I'm talking about, because you are those people, too. So, thanks for letting me highlight. Any questions?
Very impressive.
Thank you.
Okay, on to five, consent agenda. A is approval of January vouchers and vouchers payable. B is approval of December 16th, 2019, and January 13th, 2020, school board minutes. C is record of school safety journals. D is acceptance of Hales Corners Elementary PTO donations. And E is partnership agreement scoreboard. Would anyone like to remove an item?
E.
Okay. Anyone else? I'll take a motion to approve items A, B, C, and D.
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none motion. Kerry's E, go ahead, Quinn.
I think we should thank the two individuals, or company and individual, for their donation, straight-out donation, right?
One is a straight-out donation, correct.
Wonderful. And one's a sponsorship. So thank you to both of them. That's all.
Do you want to, should we reference their names, or just?
Sure, I can't find it.
It's the Jewelry Center and Joe Zapecki.
Thank you very much for your donation to that. Any other comments about E? Okay, then I'll take a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none motion Kerry's. On to six, action items. A is open enrollment. I'll take a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
It's a minor adjustment from the second Friday count. Head count went down four kids, so pretty flat from September to January, so a few different deviations. Brought down the count a little at the middle school, and one at the high school. So we're at 90 students flat. No, again, still no, based on caseload, nothing for special education open enrollment.
So I've got a question. On page 14 of the board's agenda packet, is that large spreadsheet basically? So when you talk about third column and second column from the right, optimal class size, optimal student count, do we mean targeted or optimal?
Targeted.
I want to, because optimal really, I mean, the research keeps talking about 14 to 17 students being more of an optimal, especially at the, well, I mean, that's the stuff I keep reading. Including stuff provided to me by administrators in the past. So I just wonder if, I mean, it means, to me, it's a difference between targeted versus optimal. That's, that's higher than the optimal numbers that I've seen in research.
Yeah, you, you could easily change that to targeted. Optimal here, if we used optimal, optimal 14 to 17, you'd see a drastically different school district. Less staff, less opportunity for students, as we've talked about. So we can change that language to targeted, to make that more in line with, we're not trying to say optimal 14 to 17.
I guess it depends, I suppose it depends on how you define it. It might be optimal for our district when you consider what would be the best balance of, of students for class offerings and that kind of stuff. I mean, I'm just, I'm just looking for a little more discussion on, on why we consider that optimal, you know, or is it really targeted? And with those other factors, it may be optimal. If we're just looking at class size, optimal's smaller than that. But if we're looking at other factors, would you say that that is an optimal?
If we're pulling in, yes, if we're pulling in other factors such as, you know, current teaching staff, current opportunities, current, the ability to, if we need to add classes or want to add classes, to be able to have enough students to spread out across our electives, this would be more of an optimal class size for Whitnell School District versus the research, yeah.
I do have a little concern of adding nearly 10% of the population for just like HCE alone. You know, where like next year, if we approve these numbers next year, one in 10 kids of the total population will be a first-year Whitnell student. And do we think that affects the, the culture or anything like that in the, in the district or in the classroom, or?
Well, I'll let, if Lori, or we kind of alluded to this last time with Bob as well, Lori can certainly touch upon that. What, what I look at, though, is when we start talking about, you know, staffing size and what is quote-unquote optimal. If you look at the fifth grade projection for next year, it's, it's the lowest it has been in the past. It's, it's the lowest. And so at some point, you have to take a look at, well, what is our optimal? And you have to be true to those numbers as well. This number last year was 11, and it, you didn't even get that many students. It was single digits easily. I don't know if it was five. It was a very small amount that we brought in last year. It just seems to be a lower class, and so that does tend to skew.
You're talking about, yeah, the, the class of such-and-such, right?
Yeah, I'm talking right now about next year's fifth grade, next year's fifth grade, the current fourth grade class.
Current fourth grade.
Yeah, is, is low. I mean, it's, it's, it's right online at Edgerton, but at HCE, I mean, it's been as high as 106. And right now, we're projecting, there's currently 81, and next year, if it's based on the survival rates, it's 81 as a projection as well. So that skews a little bit. And I know it probably makes Lori
So.
A little apprehensive, but it's also been a historical number that hasn't been filled through these years.
But my, my second question wasn't so much based on the optimal versus targeted stuff, but it was based on if one in 10 kids in the school is suddenly a new kid, a, a new student to the district, especially in the upper grades in the elementary school, is that, is that a concern or changed the character or the culture of the school at all? I mean, especially when, you know, other research shows that second and third grade is the best time to get a student into the district. And I know we don't have that kind of openings there, but I just wonder if there's any concern at all about the, the culture potentially leading to the, the quality of education or anything like that when we, when we, when we suddenly make 10% of the population, or nearly 10%, first-year students in the, in the, across the grades in the school?
I mean, I think that, you know, ultimately, I think ultimately, you know, that's, if we end up seeing those real, really do see those numbers, which we haven't have been out there, and the students haven't come to that particular grade level. So if we do, though, we do have supports in the place with the school counselor, school social worker, teachers who are very well-versed at helping kids transition at any point of the year. So, you know, I guess it's, it's either the case that, you know, the middle school might end up seeing a bigger number sometimes at, in that sixth grade, as they've tried to even out class sizes, so we're just talking a year earlier than that. I think from the parent standpoint, a lot of parents are looking to get into a fine district, and, you know, maybe we'll see some of those numbers. Time will tell, I guess. But I think we have resources to help kids adjust. I mean, during this course of the school year, we get kids any month, any day of the week, you know? So we help make those, those transitions whenever they come. And I think, too, when you're thinking about open enrollment, you're typically thinking about parents who have made a little bit different type of commitment to a school district, because they're driving the child there, they've selected that school district, and, and they want to be there. They want their child to be there. So, you know, some of that is, is, I think all of that is, is a bonus as well. So, I mean, time will tell, to see if those numbers actually do come to fruition.
Thanks. One last thing. Is, there's still the DPI requirement, and can you explain that? Is it, is it the number of kids you have in a grade level versus the optimal class size times the number of sections? And you've got to offer those as open enrollment seats?
You have to show DPI formula in which you determine what are the number of open enrollment seats you have available at each grade level. And so many districts use this sort of survival method, we call it the survival method, to showcase, yes, these are it. So that when spots do run out, or in which there are grades in which there are no spots, if you are questioned on it or challenged on it, you've shown a fidelity to a method, and that there was no partiality. It is what it is. And so when we are challenged on that, we are able to show DPI, here's how we figured, determined this.
So is that math, like, five classes times 20 kids in a classroom is 100? And if we only have 90 students, then there's, the math shows 10 seats, is that?
That's essentially how we're using it, yeah.
So these are essentially seats that we essentially have to offer up, based on the math for the accepted?
Based on what we've done, yeah, based on what we've done the last, at least when I've been here the last four years. This method is what we've produced.
Is there another method that might result in fewer seats that DPI recognizes?
Well, I mean, you can always, the optimal class sizes can change. I mean, you can, you set that at the district level. So that's a district variable that we create. And so these are the numbers that have been used. I think I bumped down second grade from, from last year. So you have to, I mean, you have to have some rhyme and reason as to why you choose. I mean, the optimal class size can't be one, you know, so you have to have something. And so when we talk about, you know, what is optimal for Whitnell, and we've put on record that, you know, we want to have choice for kids, and we want to have a, you know, a stable staff environment, these numbers create that. And to deviate from that would be a discussion of the board to shift away from that mindset.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none motion Kerry's on to seven, reports. A is fifth to sixth grade transition and electives.
Kathy's getting a file up, and I'm just gonna start while everybody's getting situated.
I was gonna say, it's the Lori Coma Show tonight.
So some of you remember about, and I think it was about maybe two and a half years ago, maybe a little bit before that, that we brought forward this document on career pathways to start our focus around how do we start to communicate? And so I developed this, I think it's been two and a half years ago from now, to start to give us some focus, K-12, on these three pathways specifically, and put some experiences there. I know Tom has used it to help him develop. I know the principals have used that as we've really started to look around our academic and career plans that are required by state, but also that we're developing, grades five through 12. And so as it relates to these specific pathways, we've spent a lot of time at the high school, as districts do typically, not a lot, not as much time, because we didn't have a lot of the structures in place at our middle and elementary levels. And so we're finally at a place by having some things structurally, conversations happening about how do we finally start to move some of these academic and career pathways, these exploration for students, as was laid out a couple of years ago, into our earlier grades, instead of waiting until upper grades in the high school for students to really starting to formally explore some of these options. Because right now, if they're only experiencing them at that late, some opportunities might be not available to them, such as dual enrollment academies, and some internships, and some of those other experiences with advanced coursework. So the whole goal when we laid this out was how do we develop, as we continually work backwards down into our elementary schools, opportunities to start to have those exploration opportunities, as was originally presented to the board when we did that. So we collectively have been talking for a while, it goes back years. Some things have been put into place recently that make it, make sense for us to move forward with what you will see here shortly. But I wanted to just give some overview as to the why, and this isn't been something that's been just recently discussed. It was a matter of getting all of the pieces in place that it requires to move forward with some of this. And the principals have been doing a lot of work and processing and thinking about how do we make this happen? Because there's a lot of logistics that need to go into play to make this happen. We can't just say, like, go into play next year. We couldn't have done that two and a half years ago, because we just didn't have a lot of things in place to be able to do that. So I'm gonna let them share some of the conversations and what it looks like, and the how, the why between what we're doing with a lot of this, so. However, you guys have decided to.
So we keep trying to kind of come around and work around transitions? So last board meeting, I was here to talk about like adjusting and kind of aligning our scale of grading with the middle school and the high school. And kind of continuing in that conversation is just transitioning not just the academics, but also some of the behavior pieces as we go from elementary school up into middle school. And so we want to make sure that we provide our kids and our parents and our community, continue to create clarity around some pathways that we're creating for kids. And if, can you? And so through, as Dr. Olson said, conversations that predate me in coming up with some of the pathways, and then some of the conversations that took place during some of the curriculum reviews process from last year, as well as continuing conversations between the middle school and elementary school, just about how we can support one another and work together. This has kind of evolved and, and through some opportunities around staffing, shared staffing, and just some alignment on the curricular side of things. So I think the biggest piece would be, one, if you look at it.
So this file is in your board folder, it just got put out there lately, because I know you may, may not be able to see this. We did just put that in there. I think Kathy.
Yeah, and this is, the one that's in their board folder was the old one I had, so that was kind of.
It had a typo on it, so if you grabbed the one from your board folder.
And this one, we understand, we do notice it's rotates.
No, it's fixed. The one up there is fixed.
Oh, ours has rotates. I wanted to say that word. And then we look, we started to talk about what fifth grade, sixth grade, and then seventh and eighth grade could look at, and trying to give our kids an opportunity to explore some more of our offerings and pathways in the fifth grade. And then as they get into sixth grade, really starting to introduce them to the variety of areas. And then in seventh grade and eighth grade, allowing for some intentional preparation and things that they might want to take as they start to, start thinking about what I want to take as they go into high school. And so as we looked at what we had currently at the middle school, and not looking to necessarily add more or shift the things, shift that we had, there was a slot kind of that evolved in the elementary schedule to offer some of a rotation-based offering, introductory experience for kids in fifth grade. You guys want to talk about that piece?
Well, and I think, too, I just want to piggyback off of the comment you made about the transition piece, because, you know, we, we realize that our kids, as they leave fifth grade, you know, they do need, they leave in a very excited way to head on to the middle school, but that the supports that they need, both academically and behaviorally, we know that we can be a part of that, that transition in a better way. And so this is really gonna kind of help us with, hopefully help our kids with that as well, so.
I'm gonna jump in, too. We, we've had quite a few discussions with ourselves, and then Lynn and Dr. Olson, too, about the two-part path, the academic piece, which is what we're gonna kind of be sharing today, and then some of our future work is gonna be looking at the behavioral component of this as well. Really excited to be sharing this, too. You know, I think as we have the opportunity to plan, I think this is, we're gonna be sharing some pretty cool things for our kids. For me, it's about, about some enhanced learning opportunities for our kids through an exploration. I think the key word at the elementary level would be exploratory. And then I think it definitely will shape some of their, some of the children's decisions, parents' decisions, as they move from elementary to, to middle school, and some path, future pathways that they might have. And the, and the shared staffing, as we have middle school teachers coming down to the elementary school. That is really key, because quite often, we hear, kids look for a familiar face. We have our elementary staff and myself come sometimes on their first day, go over there, and you should see the kids when they see a familiar face. This would be staff that we would share, and there'd be a familiar face that really knows the kids well, that can help with that transition. So we're gonna walk through, maybe you want to walk through the four-day rotation?
Sure, sure. So this four-day rotation allows kids to have all of those experiences that, that they've been used to, that are via general music. And you know, we did work through the general music, instrumental music piece last year, and that's going very well with kids coming out of their general music, so just thought I'd give you that update. But, so what we're gonna be able to do is now have those offerings of Spanish and French, as well as then some technology pieces, the coding and the maker space. So back during the program review, parents asked in some of the commentary around opportunities, that could there be opportunities at lower levels for, for some of the foreign language to begin? And this is an opportunity to, to let us explore some of that with our fifth-grade learners, so. And I think that, like Chris mentioned, the, the familiar face piece around Spanish, French, and then the coding maker space people, I think that's just that opportunity to build, start those relationship building that, that we're gonna have, hopefully then have some more comfort as they head on up the road to, to the middle school.
Currently, our students come in, they have one year to kind of make some decisions in sixth grade and kind of get some experiences. And then seventh and eighth are starting to kind of plan out. This gives us. This gives us a two-year window to expose our students to the pathways that we have that filter up from seventh and eighth into high school then as well too. So pushing down the maker space, decoding and some of the world language experiences will only kind of, I think, strengthen that. We've had to have some conversations with like our teachers and our staff to go, okay, how could this look? What could this look like? How, how do we best do that? And the nice thing has been, at least the group that would be taking this on or helping take this on, has been really kind of forward-thinking and going, okay, here's things we could do, here's the approaches we could take, here's how we can make it work, which has gotten it easier, at least on my side, to go, okay, this, this is how this could fit into the elementary schools as we move forward. So then the sixth grade experience would be, students would get a rotation of all, of all the electives. And so they would have exposure of every single elective that we, that we're currently offering. And then they would have, it would be kind of split with either PE, which they have to take every, you know, for the year, and then that would be aligned with the music choice that they take, which is another elective that they have to take. And so then by seventh and eighth grade, they would have the opportunity to start to kind of pathway themselves out. And so one of the things is, as we're kind of aligning down, I'm working with Charlie and teachers are working with like, some of the instructors up in the high school, about what the middle school, like an A and a B class, if you took a semester or a year of coding in middle school in seventh grade and eighth grade, what would that mean as you went into high school? So rather than maybe repeating like a course or, you know, some of the topics, it would be basically, it kind of says, course one in A would be an, A and B would be an intro course, and it would allow students to start in level one or whatever it might look like at the high school. So while they're here helping us align it down, some of the next pieces are continuing to align it up too.
I'll speak on to that. One of the things that we did not have for a long time in coming from an elective area myself is there was not a scope and sequence. And I think, John, you've asked before, you know, if they did this in the middle school, like what does that equate to? And I just don't think there was a very good process to look at scope and sequence. And we're trying to be very intentional, allow kids to explore without like committing for the rest of their life in fifth grade, but yet for those who are focused and letting the parents know, if you do this in seventh and eighth grade, it means you can get here. That wasn't a conversation we were able to share before with parents. It was like, whatever you took in middle school was just this and then you started here. And that's not a place that we should be or want to be. Kids who are intentional and know where they wanna get and have very specific goals, if I wanna get to whatever level of this, then they should be able to know that and know if they take that, rather than we're just picking an elective to fill your schedule, that there's some intention. And at the same time, if you're like, I tried it, it didn't work, that's great too. But the whole purpose of this is really some scope and sequence and putting some intentionality in the electives that allow kids to explore, but yet have purpose, especially when you get to seventh and eighth grade. So I think it, from that standpoint, that's something that's been needed as, as Bob just described.
So this is, this is planning to start next year then?
Yes.
Okay. And I like the program, it, it makes sense to me. What I would like to know is if there's any thought for looking at metrics to define if it's gonna be successful? Like, have we thought about what the program will look like if it does really well versus if we didn't do it right and need to rework it?
I can tell, I think Bob and I have talked a little bit, and Charlie have talked a little bit about, right now, the kids who are in the electives in seventh, eighth grade, and probably our counselors anecdotally hear the kids like, well, I didn't really want that class, I didn't have any idea what it was, or I didn't know the difference between a maker space or a tech ed, tech ed, or, you know, I had to take Spanish, or whatever the case might be. So there will be that piece of it from parents and survey that we can serve them, survey them. I think it will be when they get to high school and seeing how many who said, I was able to bypass, I think, you know, you approved the introductory art class at the high school, and that was intentional, to say that if kids didn't take art in middle school, that's a foundation. But now, if parents and students know, if I take those two art classes in middle school, I don't have to take that as high school, that's just intentional course planning. So I think we'll be able to survey that students feel like, through our counseling department, that the courses that they're taking in high school were intentional and that they knew exactly what to take or not to take. And I think we hear a lot from our parents through our counseling department that, oh, I didn't know that, or I wished I would have known that in middle school. So I think we can be intentional with the surveys from parents about the course selections that they're taking. And when we ask questions like, were you aware that this existed, you know, that there were internships, that there were AP classes, or you could do this, a lot of times we're getting like, nope, not until it was too late. We can ask those questions and if the answer is yes, I was fully aware of what the choices were, that's what our goal is, is that parents and students knew that they had options before they, it was too late. Cause that, that's a terrible regret to hear that parents like, or a kid comes and tells you, I wish I would have known about this earlier, cause I could have planned for that. So I think by asking and surveying both parents and students about, yes, we're aware of what the options are, and if I do this, it leads to the next step. So that's one metric. And I think that's all about communication and being very upfront and intentional. So that's what I would say is a metric.
We all wanna talk.
I was just gonna add that the other layer of metric is teachers as well, because right now, this is really forcing some intentional planning between middle school teachers and high school teachers. So Spanish, Spanish, where they always talk and they always touch base with each other, there's a lot of sort of standalone planning where I teach this, and then they're coming in here and they're leaving me, and I don't exactly know what happens before or after. So I think we can also be touching base with teachers and getting some data from fifth to sixth and eighth to ninth and really saying, how is it working? Because they are now really being delivered with, what are you doing if you have a level one and a level two? What does that mean when they come to us and really clearly defining what it means to be moving from level to level? So I think that's another data point over there.
You know, and I think dipping down at, at the elementary level, I think anecdotally, probably Mrs. Comas and I have information about parents interested in world languages and, you know, coding and maker space. And boy, wouldn't it be nice if they had some opportunities so that they, when they got into middle school, they kind of knew which pathway to go? And so I think when I was listening to what Dr. Olson was mentioning, yeah, I think that's something that we can certainly get some data and metrics on. More importantly, we'll be after the transition to see how, how families felt having had the exploratory experience.
We'll be looking at ACP data. And so as kids, if kids take, a kid takes coding one and coding two in middle school, and then they skip, skip into a program and they continue on that pathway, or do they not too? That'll provide us if we're offering them the right offerings as they get more informed as well too.
No, I, I wasn't saying. I was just, regarding the languages, I'm curious about how we're having kids take Spanish and French on an exploratory level in fifth grade, but then in sixth grade, we're continuing to take Spanish and French a semes, uh, exploratory? And is it at the same time now, Spanish and French?
No.
Or is it semester, semester? As it has been?
No, the, the shift would be, in the elementary school, they would be taking it, they have about 12 classes, is that right? Between the four courses, they have about 12 different class periods. They would rotate, they have 12 meetings of Spanish and French.
Okay.
So they would have like that exploratory spot where they would plan that out, so you'd get some exposure. When you get into sixth grade, you would have a seven-week straight period, you would be rotating through each elective. So instead of doing it like we have it now where it's like every other day for a semester, they would have it for seven straight weeks roughly of French and then maybe Spanish, or maybe they have French and then an elective. So they would have that exposure now to kind of get that consistency, that consecutive learning time. So sixth grade, it kind of goes to like more of a wheel rotation for electives. So kids get every single elective that we currently are offering versus having to pick and miss out, which on our side will save us a lot of like rearranging kids every quarter or semester, more, more every beginning of the year and semester from electives assigned.
Okay. And then I guess the question is then, for seventh and eighth grade electives, I see this note at the bottom that says, any electives offered for seventh grade can be taken in eighth grade. So does that mean that, let's say that I'm a seventh grader and I never took a theater class, and I decide that in eighth grade I'd like to try a theater class? I could do that, and then does that mean that I would be, you'd have seventh and eighth graders together taking the same elective classes?
Possibly. It would depend on course enrollment.
Okay.
Depending on, on the number of kids, depends on how many sections we could build out with staffing. But the way we're aligning our schedule to kind of try to allow for some cross-curricular learning and some more community things, that also does allow us to have the possibility if we need to integrate some of those classes for some of those like, for like a level one versus the level two.
Okay. So that was my other question is, do you have a confidence level that we can fit all of this into the schedule for all kids?
I think the way that the seventh and eighth aligns, it'll make it as easy as a middle school schedule could be when you're pushing people down and up. I think it'll, it'll align us a little bit better, I think. Absolutely. I've spent time vetting this with Mr. Gableman, with, I've had teachers look at it, I've worked with Dr. Olson, Todd Stacey, I, I don't know, I mean, because it definitely sounds like we just wanna go out and then come back in like September or whatever, go by the way, we have to change it, you know? This will be up and running-ish by like March first or whatever about, we have registration pieces coming through, we'll know exactly how many sections. It might be similar as now where if we have 35 kids sign up for something, we may have to move to the second choice of elective for certain kids if we can't fill them out. But that's why we'll have them make multiple selections like they currently.
Okay.
So I think that that's important to bring up. I, I don't know if Bob, if it was clear at least, that we are moving the middle school schedule so that seventh and eighth grades bell schedules are aligned. That's not the case right now. So it does allow us that flexibility, which hopefully gives us more flexibility in scheduling, because right now, all three grades in the middle school have different bell schedules.
They have three schedules.
Correct. So we're gonna align those, which would allow, which would maximize at least the potential, just like in the high school, where you can have mixed grade levels. And that's why that would be in seventh and eighth grade, you could have mixed grade levels. The other thing in sixth grade, I think, to point out that I think is significant when you talk about transitioning, because we're still in some of those other parts, is that we look at what does a fifth grader's schedule and day look like? And what does a sixth grader's schedule and day look like? The way with this elective period one, if you see on the document, Bob referred to it as a wheel. Instead of having an AB day where they get two different teachers in that class period, and then in their other AB day, they get two more teachers. So those teach, those students as a sixth grader are experiencing probably eight or more teachers as a sixth grader, which is a, a switch while they get multiple teachers in fifth grade, not to that extent. In the sixth grade schedule, there is one less, there is not an AB day in one of their elective periods. That's also another benefit in our mind, it's one less adult transition that the sixth graders have to deal with. And they're, they're getting seven straight days of content. Our elective teachers really like this because it's very hard. I mean, Fayed loves an AB day, and music is okay with an AB day, but most of these other ones like art and languages and anything that's messy that has cleanup in that, would prefer a consistent everyday basis rather than an AB day. So we've accommodated their asking, that they've been asking that for a couple of years. So we think it meets both of those needs, both from a student learning transition, one less adult transition. Those teachers get to know those students better right off the gate as they're transitioning to middle school. And those teachers have half as many students at a time. If you think, if you're an elective teacher, every, every A day and B day, you have twice as many kids as any other teacher. So this eliminates it to some extent, at least in the sixth grade level. So it was a win-win. We don't always get win-win situations, but this model allowed us for it's sixth grade to have that.
So you mean seven straight weeks, not seven straight days, right?
Correct. And I, and I mean, yes.
So, so I, I, I'm trying to figure out, so this elective period two, they would, on the AB rotation, I assume that is, so they would either pick band or choir or orchestra and music lab for say A day, and B day would be PE?
Yep.
And then it's swapped?
Yes.
Okay. So explain to me how the, the period one works. I understand it's seven straight weeks, but are they expected to go through each one of those things?
They will.
So they're not really electives then, right? It's a, it's a rotating curriculum on a seven-week basis for a short course, basically?
Introducing them to the electives that they have the opportunity for.
Okay. So it's not really an elective period, it's a short course, kind of a period, from my understanding of how it would work?
Correct.
So they will be, so they'll be exposed to both Spanish and French required in fifth grade? And then they'll, they'll have to take seven weeks of Spanish and seven weeks of French in sixth grade?
Yes.
Versus how many weeks that they have to take now of each?
It's us.
I can't remember.
It's basically, it's a quarter, but it's a semester long.
So it's nine weeks now. So it's like, yeah.
And is there a reason we don't offer some other language and make this truly more like an elective situation, that they have to take Spanish and French versus some other language?
Yeah, I guess that, that, for me, that's a bigger question.
Yeah.
What we built it around was our current offerings and our current staffing, so, but I think as far as offering up other, most of our students prob, I bet you like 85% or 80% of our kids probably take Spanish, and then their other 20% currently probably take French, numbers-wise. I have, I have had one email that I know of that came about asking for another language. I'm not familiar if there's been other requests for that along the lines or anything. I, we built this around our current offerings, not looking, looking at the pathways that filled the previous document.
So is there room for flexibility? Cause I mean, I, when my son was at that level, I was one of the parents asking, and then I get that question from time to time.
What I would, I would say, I mean, it's up for discussion for the board, each language licensure is unique. So it's not like a world language teacher, if you would offer, let's say Chinese, you would have to get a Chi, Chinese licensed teacher. So right now, our Spanish teachers cannot teach French, and our French teachers cannot speak Spanish. So if we decided to offer another language, you would have to find a licensed teacher in that language and offer them partial, you'd have to, you'd have to be the FTE, and you would have to then reduce current staffing. So it'd be reallocating staffing, because there's only so many students. And so it'd be, be around staffing and licensure and availability of what other language there might be.
I'm sure there's data, or somewhere from the curriculum maybe, I don't remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I articulated this question well before, but I guess my question is, and I know you put a lot of time into this, is I'm wondering if after that exploratory phase in fifth grade, if a student would be equipped to say, well, why do I have to take French and Spanish again? I really liked French, I'd sort of like to take French now. Or I'd really like to take Spanish now based off my experiences in fifth grade, and then maybe I could get farther faster in sixth grade? So I'm just throwing out there as, you know, food for thought. I don't know if that has scheduling issues for you, but then I'm just wondering if students would be able to, would feel comfortable choosing at the sixth grade level rather than sixth grade going into seventh grade? And I don't know if that's been frustrating or not for kids and families doing, you know, having to take the time and do both for the sixth grade. And then, so my understanding is that behavior is gonna be a separate presentation later?
Correct.
Okay. And then, could you give me an example of what you talk about when kids might get cut off from classes in the future? So like, we make these choices now, and the opportunities are either available later or not available later? I learned an interesting phrase at the USCAB conference, which is like on-ramps and off-ramps. And there was a lot of talk about keeping opportunities open for kids as much as possible so that they have these chances to take the advanced level courses. So I'm just curious about how many choices in middle school open or close doors for kids as they progress?
Sure, it's a great question. This actually opens more doors because we've not had that. We've been limited to some of the advanced stuff because kids haven't started earlier or they've, because it hasn't had an appropriate scope and sequence. So, but we've also been very careful about keeping on-ramps available at ninth grade. I'll use the art example, for example. Any of these tech ed or anything that you see, these combinations of things or coding, we're allowing students in seventh and eighth grade to take them as an entry point to, if they have that in mind. And like, I'm very focused, and by 11th grade, I'm gonna be taking an internship or youth apprenticeship or youth options or whatever it is, because I was, I was very focused and that hasn't changed. Or, oh my gosh, I've just discovered coding, I never knew it existed, and I'm a sophomore. Yep, you can start here too. So we're trying to make sure that there are multiple places for students to on-ramp. That's not been the case up until this point. So the intro to art class, for example, is one of those. By adding that at the high school level, yet having an opportunity at the middle schools, students have two different onramping points at that point. So it keeps options available to kids, and that's what we're trying to do by, by all of these. Just to briefly touch your question about the languages, possibly something we can look at in the future with that sixth grade? Because we haven't done it in fifth grade, I think it would be too early, too early for us to say what that implementation would be at fifth grade. What we are doing is not requiring it at seventh and eighth grade anymore, which is, which is a shift. Because right now, languages have been required for all students in seventh and eighth grade. That, that's a bigger shift. So whether or not the implementation of fifth grade alone and what bearing that would have onto selecting a language earlier, I think we would look at that and see what the data I think we would look at that and see what the data and what they're able to accomplish in that amount of time in fifth grade, you know, what that is. And we let the teachers be able to say that is or is not, or parents let is or is not enough for us to make any determination.
And there still is an ongoing opportunity for those students. If they decide not to elect a language, there still is that level one at the high school. If they determine, okay, I really actually do want to get into it and get into whatever language.
Thanks for clarifying that, that's helpful.
Anybody else?
To Chris's point about behavior in phase two, that will be an upcoming report. And I want to be careful, it's not just behavior, behavior. We, in our world, we use that, but it's procedures and schedule and things that we can do something about that make fifth grade closer to look like sixth grade, rather than fifth grade look closer to kindergarten. When we look at what the, the, the world is of a fifth grader right now, just because of the building they're in. So we've realized that there are some procedural things that we can do to make that transition a lot easier and less stressful for our students between fifth or sixth. And that is part two, which you'll get, maybe not next month, but for sure after that.
Our analogy, and we kind of were playing around, having fun with this, but our analogy was a train. Lynn brought up a train analogy a couple of years ago with staff. Having a track from kindergarten through twelfth grade. And that when you get from sixth grade to sixth grade, it's not like we're starting on a new track for kids, just like taking them off and going. And I feel like, you know, kids go across the street from Edgerton, and it feels like a whole new world. And we're, it doesn't have to. And so I think, you know, trying, not that we haven't in the past, but we have some opportunities with some new data to really put more intentionality in, in that transition. And the routines and so forth that, you know, that we have in an elementary school at a fifth grade level is quite different. Believe it or not, quite a di- different than kindergarten. So the idea there then is to kind of look at not only the behavior, but like Lisa said, some of those routines that we put in place. And kind of look from fifth to sixth grade and see what that looks like for kids. So yeah, see you in a couple of months, give us a little time.
Good. Anybody else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto the data report, the Student Family Assistance Program with Jackie.
Excuse me, did we not pay the heat though?
Again?
I don't know. There's a vent coming.
There is.
Yikes.
I think that's to control.
Blowing a mist over here.
Does anyone?
My husband is also, not exactly the same things, but he, he is also sick, and that's what he's got the.
Hoodie over his head.
So I submitted a report just to give the first quarter kind of overview of where we're at with our initial implementation of the Student Family Assistance Program, which is kind of exceeding expectations or kind of the norm of some of the other districts that are utilizing the program. So you can see in your report, it lists.
Out what the percentages are. So typical use is around, you know, three percent of the population. And we right now are at six percent. So we are high, so averaging.
Above where most districts are.
I think that partially our pupil services team has really embraced the ability to give parents and students a resource to access. But I think the other part of our use is that we've been creative. You listened to Russ and Liz talk about things at the high school last week or at our last meeting. And this has given us an opportunity to offer students an alternative to exclusionary discipline. So we have, we keep track of that on a separate sheet, so that we know what we're referring out.
But then it also balances with families, families accessing the program on their own as well. So any questions about the information?
Does the, the breakdown of thirty-eight percent for child and family, twenty-seven, eighty away, does that surprise you on those numbers, or is it pretty much what you've seen with our students?
You know, I don't know that, that we necessarily had a prediction of, of what the percentages would be. I think we probably, if we were going based off of what our pupil service people see students for, they probably would think that the anxiety percentage would be much higher, because they have, are.
You know, really working with students around them coming to school and, and you know, how they can work with those issues. So I would say they probably expect that number to be higher. The twenty-seven percent for the A O D A might be higher because of our use of it in terms of the athletic and activity code violations, that, you know, if kids participate in sessions, that then we're willing to.
Work with them on what the violation means.
What is A O D A?
It would be like alcohol, tobacco.
You know what it's, I, I just wonder what it stands for.
Alcohol.
And other drug abuse.
Okay, thanks.
Have you got any feedback from anybody who's used these services?
I asked. Out of, of the people who are actually making the referrals, and they only had, I know, a handful of parents who have come back to them, but everybody was very complimentary of how easy it was to make the phone call and to access the support. But then also that they got into their sessions very quickly, and when they were trying to do it on their own, that they were really struggling with when the appointment would be, as well as giving some pretty good feedback about their, you know, experience with the counselors. But like I said, only a handful of people.
Well, that's good.
So exclusionary dis- discipline is anything from suspension to sidelined for so many.
Correct.
Sport games or, you know, exit sport.
Right.
Something like that, expulsion at all or not?
We have not used it.
In terms of expulsion.
All right. How, what, out of that hundred percent that that adds up to, what, what percent do you think is, has been utilized for exclusionary discipline?
I would have to look at the spreadsheet to look to see like which ones, which referrals, because our spreadsheet is inclusive.
Of, of all of the referrals that we've made, so it could be, you know, a student coming in and feeling like this. Is going to be something that really helps them, and you're getting a release signed versus like using it where it's a mandatory that they participate.
So it seems as though we get the word out.
Yeah, I think so. And I mean, when you look at.
If we continued, you know, and it could be the newness of the program, but if we continued at that six percent, you know, certainly the dollar value will be there, because it was, you know, around sixty thousand that those hours of counseling would have cost if we were just paying out for that.
I think normally, when you, when you put a new program like this into place, you don't see the utilization very high at all in the beginning until people start getting used to it. So this is kind of different than what, what I'm used to seeing.
It's really.
Exciting. And I mean, I think certainly it's, it's giving them something to, to talk about with parents and directly give them a number rather than, you know, saying, I really hope that you can look for something for your child, that gives them direct access.
Well, I'm glad that people have a, a little more, easier access for some help, but I'm especially glad that we offer some alternative to the, you know, to suspensions and that kind of stuff, where they get to stay in school and gain some additional help or knowledge.
It's a lot more learning involved.
Yeah. So I would be interested to know how, how much of the utilization is as a result of an alternative to the exclusionary discipline.
Yeah, I can put that together. We've got it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Onto C Finance and Facilities Committee Report with Stephen.
All right. So we met last Monday, and our agenda covered two different things. One was talking about financing the cafeteria project, and one was looking at prioritization of the ten-year project outlook. So we talked about basically what it came down to with the financing, I know I'm freezing. So the whole project's around, just shy of two point six million. So the bulk of this is going to come from our Fund Forty-One, which is the money that we put away for these projects. So that'll be about one and a half million. The thought with this is that the, it's got a fairly minimal effect on our mill rate in the coming years. Where it'll be for a hundred fifty thousand dollar home, about two point, or two dollars and twenty-five cents per year. The next part of it kind of will come from the possibility of having money left in our Fund Ten, depending on how our health insurance kind of pans out for the year. So in regard, if we have nothing with that, our next source would be using the state aid, or sorry, yeah. The, the, sorry, the state trust fund. And that's a loan that we can get that has a fairly quick turnaround. We can use our initial money for, as part of this year, so we can see how we end up with our budget before we'd have to come up with the amount of money that we would have to finance that way, if that's the way we wanted to go into it. And that was fairly much at the, and then the other part would be going into the next year's school budget and being able to take money from those funds to cover the, a small percentage of what's left. So the good news is, most of this has an incredibly small effect on our rates for the mill rate. The state trust fund loan, we are about to pay off one loan, so this would be essentially just replacing it with a new loan. So that would have zero effect on the mill rate, and as far as what the taxpayers have to support, it'd be unchanged. So that's what we're looking at going forward for being able to pay for this product, straddling it over the two budgets. So the real final numbers, we won't know until really the end of the budget this year, until we see what we have as a surplus. Any questions?
Yeah, but don't we have to make some decisions now?
No, we have enough funds to cover the first portion of the project from now until June thirtieth. We have enough cash flow to go dip into July and August. We could see where.
Cash flow or, or coming from Fund Forty-One?
No. Ideally, we would, ideally, you would have the project complete about one and a half million dollars prior to June thirtieth. So use Fund Forty-One at that point and use those funds up. In the midst of either, we would need a loan, we would need to go a loan route, we have enough cash flow to cover the project until we would get that loan and from the state trust fund.
Correct.
Yeah. We learn from the state trust fund as little as thirty days and take those dollars. So a pretty quick process from a board approval to, to receiving the funds.
Isn't that, and where we are in our budget, that's usually where we have the most cash funds available. For where we've gotten things. So that's how we can support it to transition to the loan if we needed to.
So was it the committee's suggestion that we try and do this not of cash flow, not go to loan?
It would, it would be most advantageous, correct, if we have surplus from this year, operational dollars from next year, depending upon how the budget shakes out, as well as potentially use any leftover referendum contingency. Those three sources would be most ideal to complete this project. Should we not have enough of those sources, we would have then the state trust fund, some debt falling off from the state trust fund. We'd simply replace that with some debt back on it.
Is it Fund Forty-Six that we have funds for this type of project?
Fund Forty-Six could be, but it is not able to be used until the fall of twenty-one. So that would be beyond the scope of this project. We really want to leave that for the operational capital movement list.
Other questions?
Yeah, so where are we at timeline? Like, how are things going with the planning for the cafeteria remodel? What's coming up next?
Yeah, so right now, yeah, that was part of our, that was part of the discussion as well. So there was a, a timeline that has been laid out. Steve, do you want to speak to it?
You've got the better details, so go ahead. You got this.
What you're going to see in February to start out the project is going to be a quote for, or proposals for asbestos removal, the fun part of the project, really in that back multipurpose room area. That's going to come before any other bids. The reason we feel comfortable, first of all, that has to be done regardless, we have to rem.
Asbestos is for the cafeteria.
Cafeteria floor.
The current cafeteria.
Cafeteria floor, sorry.
Yeah.
Current caf, sorry. There's asbestos removal to be done. That's going to be done first, it has to be done anyway, so.
Over spring break.
Right.
Right, that's why the, the timing of it's critical, because that.
It has to be done if we disturb it.
I like this.
Correct.
If we don't disturb it, it doesn't have to be done. But it's got to be done if we're doing the project.
Correct.
Or anything else.
Or anything else ever at any point, right?
So we feel comfortable with doing that in February. We're probably going to see that at one board meeting, timing-wise, because of getting enough people in here. We have to work with the state on asbestos removal and go through a process for that. So we're going to get a flat-out, probably three or four bids, as we have with other asbestos projects, and act on that in, in February, so that it can be done over spring break in a timely manner. In March then, we're going to bring all the rest of the project quotes and bids and packages together for the board. It's possible that we could see the entire package on March ninth. However, it is more likely that C G Schmidt will not have the entire, all of the bids in time for March ninth. And it may then have to only be a March thirtieth presentation, proposal, and vote. Or else now we're talking about getting it into a timeline that it may not be able to get done before the start of school, if we push it beyond March. So kind of an unfortunate timeline there. However, at the Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, we said we'll do kind of an update on March ninth to kind of show where C G Schmidt is in that process, what we're seeing so far, where bids are coming in, if we're feeling comfortable with how it's looking, and, and bring it all forward on March thirtieth.
Right, so, right. So the timing of it is, we might, like with the referendum, we kind of had the whole package laid out at once. With this, it'll probably come in two chunks, just because of the timing of when we can get the bids and get the due diligence done, to look at that kind of thing and have the work done. And then also because we need to do some of it over spring break and then start other parts, so we're not interrupting school, we can safely remove the asbestos when we have the area sealed off and get the air quality testing done and that kind of stuff. Because you don't want to do that with the students present, and that's going to be our first step. Question?
Okay, that would be it. I mean, once, once a March thirtieth proposal, if everything comes in line with our current budget, we're ready to begin that process in the multipurpose room while the kids are still here, and kind of section that off and start.
Thanks.
Yeah.
So then the other part of the meeting then, we were talking about the tenure plan. So last, we really weren't talking about objects that were on the tenure plan, which is about forty million dollars worth of things. But what we were looking at is how to prioritize it. So there was a document from something like five to eight years ago, talking about what things should be considered in putting something on the list, and what increases its priority to it. So some things are like student safety, the learning environment, the building envelope itself, things on those lines. Some of them, the document was purposely led to give more latitude towards prioritizing things. But I think at the meeting, we pretty much wanted to have a little more finite structure on how to rate things when they come up. So the next step that we were going forward with was trying to create a matrix that had a point value for looking at either safety or learning or whatever it was, so that we could actually have a point value overall with all the items on the list that we then give them a priority to get done in a specific order. So part of what, they've reached out to other school districts to try and get some grading information. We got one matrix back from, it sounds like Saint Francis. Kenosha, that one too. So Mike and Todd Iverson, we're going to kind of put together a Whitnall focus grid, send it out to the committees so that we can have some tweaks on it, and then they can apply it to the list and see if we agree with how that kind of looks out once we have that presented. So that, that's going to be some work kind of going on behind the scenes, but that's where that's going to be at this point. All right? Other questions? All right. Excellent.
Okay. All right, thank you. Onto D, School Board P T O and Liaison Reports. Go around, Nancy, anything to report?
I should have taken my notes from the meeting, but I don't think there was anything really special that we. I should've taken my notes from the meeting, but I don't think there was anything really special that we talked about. The recognition dinner is Friday night, so if you, Lisa and I are attending, so if you still wanna attend, I'm sure that there is room for you if you ask, wanna send in your RSVP.
Or if Lisa wants to stay home a sec.
She'll be better by then. They did, I don't know if you remember that we did open a skating rink at Conkle Park, so that's been pretty well attended. Even with the weather, they had a shutdown for a little while, but it's back up running, and so a lot of people have been skating there, and that's going well.
The father of one of our teachers and coaches is being inducted as part of that ceremony on Friday. And then, one of our coach from last year is being inducted as well. He's not gonna be there for the meeting, but he's being inducted as well, so Whitnall will be represented well.
That's good.
I was not able to make the PTO meeting, but I did send in a report. Hey, Chris?
Uh, yep, you wanna know what they did?
Oh, I don't think so.
Yeah, okay.
Probably same as the month before. Moving on. A little brutally honest, but it's, it's what it is.
All right, well, Chris comes meeting right now, so.
Why are you there?
I don't know, I did a video of.
Have a live feed going.
Okay.
HC met last week, Laurie talked a lot about HC already, they meet again on March seventeenth. But I also like to recognize Laurie, because we had a parent there that asked a very, very in-depth educational question, and I looked around like, I don't know who you're about to ask that question, so I'm not gonna answer that. And Laurie was like right on top, right away, and was like, actually, yes, we do look into that, and we do this, 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 and this. It was really, it was really great, cause I don't think the parent expected to have that kinda answer. So, it was great to know that our administrators know their stuff and are doing a great job, so thank you, Laurie.
Karen, the Laurie Comish.
Yeah, so in December, the middle school PTO met, and I just have a couple highlights. One is that there's some new clubs and groups forming at the middle school, which is kind of exciting. I think they have, you can, Bob, just jump in if I've got things right. I started with a gaming club, you've got some chess, I think.
Chess has been going on all year, and then Dungeons and Dragons group.
Right.
And then Robotics Club.
Robotics Club, and then do you have a history club too?
We have a history group.
History group, there's, so, clubs are more formal, groups are a little looser. And then you're also talking about maybe doing a Gay Straight Alliance group?
Yeah, I've got a lot of students asking too, I think, I think we shared it with maybe the last one, with Ms. Courtney Fleischman, and we have two teachers who are interested in supporting students who wanna have, start to evolve that. We're not, we're not sure if that's exactly what it's gonna be called, cause we wanted to make it approachable for all kids, not, you know, this. And that's working on the menu.
Okay, and then, you know, the regular stuff, raising money, doing concessions at some of the games and athletic activities, doing eat and earns. They've been really successful with some of their fundraisers. And then, you know, the environment and the appreciation things around the school. And then the only thing I wrote down was also, you know, possibly looking at an artist in residence going forward. I also went to, extra credit, I went to Music Boosters meeting, they had a very good meeting as well. And they are getting ready for solo ensemble, also planning their fundraisers, and they, they had a very good meeting.
At the high school or middle school?
High school, high school music, band, choir, yeah.
But it combines middle and high school.
It does.
Yep.
Orchestra, yeah.
And actually, this Friday is the eighth grade combining with the high school pep band, Friday night. They have to be there at six-thirty. Six-thirty, they review the music, they play for the game, and then they have a, a movie afterwards, I believe.
Karen, were you the one telling me that we have a really good bands or jazz setup, or what was it?
Oh, I was telling you about the, well, the acoustics group, that's the a cappella group, it's sixteen voices, they practice before school. So, we saw a group at the WASB convention that was like similar in size to that, so, yeah.
How, how do we go about that, is there a timeframe to put applications in, or?
The auditions.
Oh, you mean for WASB? Yep, we, just like when we shared out the art thing, we share that out with our music staff, and that's their choice, yep, it's their choice to submit if they feel like they have a group that's ready.
Okay, good, glad we do.
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you. Onto eight board goals, we don't have any updates for continuous improvement this month, so we're just going to have legislative and advocacy. I will be SWSA reporter. Quinn, Lisa.
Oh, yeah, I was there.
The state superintendent.
Yes, thank you. And I think some of you heard her speak at the state convention, so she's very good, she's very genuine and authentic in her speaking. Most of you know that she was appointed to the role, and has announced publicly that she's not running again. I don't think it was ever her, you know, ambition to do that, she stepped up into the role, but speaks very eloquently, you know, her, her life story speaks to it about equity and what she's, and really hasn't changed, you know, that, that mission, so I think a lot of people respect her and is, is working very hard. I think she announced, when she was at SWSA, we were trying to get her, many superintendents and business managers were trying to get her to say what she's going to ask for in the next biennial budget for the special education dollars, because there was a lot of increase in it this last time. She said not less than, at the convention, sixty percent, so a lot of people were trying to get that to be said. We know that the, the voucher schools are getting funded at ninety percent reimbursement rate, so there's still a disconnect between that. That would be a huge impact, especially to a district like ours, that's at, at fifteen point five percent special ed, much higher than any areas around us. We have a, a much higher special education population than most districts, and higher than the state average. So, that would be a, a huge impact to us, the, the change this year was, was important to us. So, it doesn't mean that we do things differently, and it, it frees up Fund Ten dollars, if we're able to have that, is what it does. So, a lot around that was focused, and then some of the bills, there was some stuff that just came out today on some legislative that, that's moving forward with a couple of things, so we'll send that out. I think there's some questions, you know, the governor's asked for a special session, nothing related to education. We don't know that that's gonna happen, but there's still a couple of things out there as far as bills that might gain traction. I don't think there's a lot of motivation from our legislators in a going-to-be-election year, cause there's nothing that's related to the budget on some of those. But, yeah, the majority of the meeting was listening to her, and what are the priorities moving forward? And for the next biennial budget, what can we be doing as districts right now to get your legislators ready? And it's getting them in your buildings and just seeing the things you're doing, so they have a deeper understanding of, of how funding impacts programming and, and understanding what programming is and how a lot of that works, because remember, education is just one of the things that your legislatures have to deal, you know, they do everything, as far as transportation and Medicaid and all of that. So, the more you can do in an off-biennial year, the better. That's it.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Okay, then we'll go on to the WASB convention, attendee reports first.
So, excuse me, Wednesday, I really just did the vendors and the main speaker. One of the nice things, I'm not sure if he's always been there, I just recognized, I was able to talk to the state trust fund gentleman. And he, he told me how, how it all started out and where we're at, and so we borrow money from them and at three point two-five percent, or if you go higher, at three point seven-five or vice versa. And in that interest and fees that they collect, they give it back to us. And we received just seventy-nine thousand, just shy of eighty thousand dollars last year for our library, right? Right, so it, it's a, a fund that we, we borrow and we benefit from, all school districts do. So, it was a nice conversation with him. On Thursday, my first meeting, Thursday I was full, innovating the strategic plan. Miss Keagle, Norway gave the presentation, and they're farther along than we are, but I can see from things that they talked about, we are, we are, I don't wanna say mimicking, but we are on doing a lot of things that they have done to get where they are now. And then at, I went to a internet cafe presentation, seven things you do, you need not, excuse me, seven things you need to stop doing to be a more productive board. It was so full, I couldn't get in to the main area, so I had to stand outside, and I couldn't hear the lady, and so I just saw the, the, the videos thing. So, it was not a waste of time, close. Ten forty-five was redefining ready, the Wisconsin way, and so when we had gone to the, I think it's several years ago, at Greendale, where we had three or four districts and our, all our representatives were there, you know, one things, one of the things was they want you to be, want you to attend ninety percent of either school, work, and it seemed, and, and they made the comment there, and it seems here that, jeez, ninety percent, so I would miss one day out every two weeks. I'm not sure as an employer or as a school, you're gonna be real happy about that. And I, and I asked, and they said, data shows that if we can get students to, to attend at ninety percent rate, they flourish thereafter, that they close that gap, but that's the number that we have to put to, that's the baseline. And, and they come in and we get them going ninety percent, and it seems as though they, they, their attendance is, is well better once they get going into programs. One forty-five was be a leader who multiplies, how to maximize your influence and become a leader, worth following. It was the same thing that we did with the Gallup. Yeah, you know, knowing personalities and how to deal with different personalities. So, it was, it was really, they narrowed it down to five. And, and I'm sure it's a, it's called Five Voices Assessment, so. But it was, it was just reaffirming what we do, that we, you know, in life, in, in the board and wherever we are, you know, we have to know the people's strengths and weaknesses in order to get along with them and make things work. And then, Friday, I went and saw this movie, it's called Love Them First, Lessons From Lucy Lane Elementary. And it's on YouTube and Amazon Prime, if you got an hour and a half. My wife and my oldest daughter watched it again last night, and it, it is amazing. This, this school is all in, there's no doubt about it. It will, it will, it is amazing, love them first, watch it, it is, it's pretty special, it really is, love them first, so. And, and my, my favorite, one of my favorite things was the jazz band on Thursday was spectacular, just spectacular. All, all the music is, all three that I saw, the a cappella was that, what it was wonderful too. I mean, just kids up there, just, you know, and Wednesday was.
Richland Center's a band?
They have four hundred kids in their, in their high school, and a hundred and sixty, a hundred and forty are in the band. I mean, that's like a forty, it's crazy, and the participation they have, and they are wonderful, so enjoyed it. Thanks for allowing me to go.
Thank you.
Uh, one, so went to some similar presentations, but one of the best ones that I went to was talking about onboarding board members. So, you know, this board went kind of a full three-year cycle without any replacements, and now we're kind of at a point where we have new members. And it talked about ways to do it and how important it was, and it actually broke it up into not just first board meeting, here you are. It actually started with pre-election, kind of talking to people and getting, getting them to understand more about the board culture, board expectations, what the job really is. And one of the interesting things that was going on in the room is they start out saying, what makes a good board member? And people are saying, you know, just different stuff, but one of them was, what hurt a board was someone coming in with an agenda. And it was kind of interesting, cause someone objected to that, saying, you know, an agenda makes it sound like it's a negative term. An agenda just should be what you want to do. So, it made me kind of think about it, and we were talking a little bit about it, Karen, Lisa and I, about how each one of us is on this board for a different reason, and I don't know why Nancy's on the board or what.
I don't either.
No, but, no, but like you, you've been on it for a while, and that thing can kinda change, you know, Quinn's been on it for a while. He's kind of evolved in his time in the board. So, it would be an interesting exercise to kinda like go through and say why we're here, what we wanna see, cause so much of, you know, other, like one of the presentations that you guys were talking about was being an effective board member, member and distinguishing what an administrative task is versus a board task. And the example they gave was changing the bell schedule at the high school, changing like the length of classes. And whose responsibility is that, is that the board or the administration? And, you know, I think a lot of new board members, that's our job to describe, but it's really the administration. And they have to describe to the board why they wanna do it, why it's important, and set up metrics as to, is it a good idea or not, or what's it based on? But it's, you know, up to the board to ask that, but not for them to decide how to do it. So, some of these things, I think, for people, especially we have a wide candidate field coming up, would be a great discussion to have with them, you know, we're not there yet, and it's, I know that board president's one of the people up, but it's certainly something I'd be willing to talk to the people, the prospective people, and kinda say, give them kind of a pre-election orientation, to help them get a better understanding of everything, what they're walking into. And I think it'll help them maybe focus a little bit about what they wanna do when they get here. But just some really good things I thought came out of that, that can help us as a group, that I thought all kinda goes into policy and how we operate.
Well, we used to do a board, what did we call it?
Academy.
Academy, Board Academy, where a lot of those, so it was open to anyone who was interested in running. And then a lot of those things were discussed at that.
Sure.
And I know we haven't done that.
Well, we, we have the last, the last two or three years, we've offered it, but instead of just, cause two years in a row, we scheduled the time, and Stephanie and Lisa sat here for two hours, and no one came. So, what we did the last two years was to offer, if anyone's interested in running, contact us, we'll do it on an individual basis. We'll meet, we'll give you the information. And I know you and two worked together on a binder packet and some information of what to expect, what to look for, and what to do, so.
It was nice hearing that we had a lot of the pieces that they talked about. I don't wanna say we're doing a bad job, but it's, a lot of the pieces were there. I came onto the board at an odd time in between, so I really didn't. So, for me, my experience was very different than other people's, but it was nice hearing that we have a lot of these pieces. But I think there's some other things that, the lights kinda went on about a few different things, I think, can help out people transitioning, you know, onto and off of. Sorry, gotta call someone. Okay, anything else? That was my big one, I think, that's the one I got a lot out of.
Okay, good. Okay. Kevin?
I'm waiting till it's, it's light turns.
Okay. Karen?
Okay, so I've got three, I went to many sessions, but I've got three in particular that I wanted to share about. The first one was a pre-convention session on redefining ready, so I got this very nice brochure that I will figure out how to scan and maybe share in the folder that talks about college and career readiness, and so in here, there's information, much like what you got, Quinn, about some of the different indicators that research show what really helps kids. So, if we know that a kid, for example, took and passed Algebra II, that that's a really great success indicator. There's the advanced placement exams, there's attendance and things like that for academic success, career success, and life readiness. And then in the back, which is really great, there's pages of information and links to all of the research that backs it up. So, very interesting presentation. But in addition to this, the presenter was a gentleman from a school district in Illinois where they're doing many, many, many innovative things that really connect kids to, to life, to jobs, to careers, and give them interesting experiences and portfolio experiences, and one of their hashtags is more than a score. So, we're talking about developing the whole individual, much more than just, you know, the test scores. So, great presentation, I hope to get a copy of it. I know we do a lot of things. I know we do a lot of things that we're into redefining ready here. And when I was talking with the presenter afterwards, we were talking about like, how do we take some of this stuff and then scale it up so that even more kids have more opportunities to have these great innovative and interesting experiences? Then, I think everybody who went saw the keynote speaker on, I think it was a Wednesday, Scott McLeod. And so, he had an afternoon session that I went to that was about redesigning a lesson. So, basically, taking a lesson that you already have, and then making stronger connections to real-life, real-life careers and real-life technology. And so, what they did was they showed some lesson plans, and then we worked in small groups to really brainstorm different ways that this lesson might be able to be connected to technology, or different ways that it might be made more relevant to real work and real careers. And so, what was really interesting about it was that it wasn't a program where you have to redo your whole curriculum at once or anything like that, but you could take an existing lesson and just tweak it. And then, and then maybe come back later and tweak it a little bit more. So, it seemed like it was something that was very easy to play with and experiment with. And he does like two-hour teleconferencing sessions that would be really interesting for maybe some professional development. And I bought some of his books, too. But, what was really interesting about it, too, is that it's about keeping high standards, too. He mentioned like, you don't opt out of teaching the Pythagorean theorem, but you make it in a way that's more connected to how you would use it in the real world. And then, finally, I went to a presentation, Lisa and I were both at a presentation about coherent governance, presented by the Sun Prairie School District, which was entitled, Aligning the Work of the Superintendent and Board for Student Success. And so, this is about board governance and a board governance model where there's much more freedom for the superintendent and administration to basically run the district and for the board to operate at the thirty-thousand-foot level. But, there's also specific board policies about board expectations and what the board and community wants. And there's also a ton of community outreach involved. So, so it was very interesting. It's all aligned to the outcomes that the board wants to see and that the community wants to see. So, it was pretty great. And I put the presentation in the board folder that you can take a look at. I ordered a book called Good Governance is a Choice. And so, one of the things that I loved is they said, in, this might have been in Sun Prairie, but I went to two presentations. The other one was Chippewa Falls. And one of them said, at our meeting debrief, one of the things that we look at is, you know, how much time did we spend talking about our district goals? And how much time did we talk about student success in our meeting? And that's one of their measures of a good meeting, is if they're really aligning to that student achievement, student success. And that's it.
Great. Thank you. And now, drum roll.
Delegate Assembly. So, I did see a good portion of the keynote speaker on Wednesday. But, yeah, the Delegate Assembly, that's where all the action really is. Surprisingly, overall, I think it might have been the quickest one I've been to. It was only like two hours. Most of the other ones have gone the full three-year longer. Every resolution passed, there were only two that were in quite a bit of debate. Both eventually had the question called and ended discussion. The biggest ones were, I'll start with the one that actually passed, was the student equity statements. And essentially, what the resolution was, was it's in response to, there were a couple incidents in the last school year or so, about the calendar year, regarding different racial undertones and things that have said or weren't said on different playing fields. And a big thing had to do with a district who apparently had no idea how to handle that. And what the resolution was stating was, we would work with all of our extracurricular and co-curricular organizations, such as the WIA, and tell them to hold us and the school districts with them responsible and accountable for student equity. So, creating an environment where everything's respectful, welcoming, and hate speech or other actions are not tolerated, and that we're actively embracing diversity. So, it really was odd to see certain people's opinions on things. There was someone who went up there and said, they coached for a sport for eighteen years, and they never once saw any type of hateful or discrimination things. And I looked over him like, you must be crazy. But, then there was also a good discussion because WASB is really all about allowing local control over things. Not to say that we shouldn't promote these things, but when the words require their members to, that draws a big red flag with a lot of people in the organization because we're essentially lobbying the government to have us, get us, get us these things or have us do these things. And a lot of it, the discussion ended up being, well, I don't want anybody requiring us to do anything. We need to decide what we're going to do. Ultimately, there was a couple of passion speeches about, you know, lack of diversity just amongst the people in the room, among other things. But, it ended up passing, so I don't know where that's going to go as far as lobbying. I feel like a lot of it is kind of redundant in that I know we have policies and procedures in place. It was kind of surprising to see a lot of districts that didn't have similar things in place, or weren't going out of their way to promote such things. The other item that did not pass was, if I can go back here.
Equity one passed, right?
Yes, Equity One passed quite handedly, which was interesting considering the conversation went pretty back and forth. Though, I think a big turning point was the Waukesha School District representative came up to say that he was dead-set against promoting this policy, or pushing this resolution until he heard a few people speak and said, what you guys just said absolutely changed my mind and we need this. And I think that might have swayed a lot of people that were thinking elsewhere, elsewise. But, there were a lot of rural districts that spoke up, more or less because they wanted control over what they were doing. But, a very good point someone, someone brought up was, we already require our athletes to sign something that says they're going to adhere to a certain code of conduct or academics or something along those lines. What is the difference if it says refrain from doing hateful things and accepting diversity? I think that was a fair point and a really good point made that not many people considered. I think a lot of people were saying, and the concern was, what, what do you define as diversity? And kind of took it to extremes, when really all it means is, we welcome anybody who wants to be here. But, that passed pretty handedly. The one that did not pass was the Native American mascots. That was a resolution. And it came about from the Wasaw School District. They brought it forward as they had been working with some tribes and they're actively changing their mascot or going to choose to do so. I think there are between thirty and forty that still currently have something that is directly or indirectly related to Native Americans. And it talked about requiring, again, requiring is the key word here, and that's why I think the resolution ended up failing, was that the WASB supports a legislation requiring school districts to retire mascots, names, nicknames, logos, imagery. And then, the other part with it was that the, we want legislation that would ultimately pay for these schools to do it. So, it would be the state funding it. And a lot of people stood up, well, I'm not giving you money to do something you should have did in the first place. Or, some schools that have already changed it said, hey, we took care of this on our own. Why do we need to require you to do something we think you should do or you should choose to do anyway? So, that went down one oh one to two eighteen. And I will say, the voting numbers were, the total numbers varied. I think some people didn't know how the devices worked, and I think some people showed up late, because there was a count of just over three hundred there. But, one oh one to two eighteen, it went down. So, yeah. I don't know where that goes from here. It seems the trend, from what I've seen with Miami Falls voting to change theirs, among some others, is that local authorities trying to phase it out. But, there's a lot of conflicting ideologies with it. One school district came up there with a letter from a tribe saying that they, tribe wholeheartedly supports this and it represents them greatly. Another person went up there and said, we should have local tribes, or the local tribe that's associated in the area make the determination. That didn't turn into a big argument because a lot of people said, well, how do you determine what the local tribe is? I come from a district where we have six. Which tribe are we supposed to listen to? Or, if you have a letter from two thousand and five, who's to say that in five years you're not going to get a letter that says the exact opposite thing? There's new leadership in the tribe. So, I think a lot of it had to do with local control. That was a lot of the comments that we're saying. And then, again, the requiring, because the body is very much against having the government require us to do anything, and we should be deciding on our own. But, those are the two big ones that came about that provided the most discussion. Everything else passed, so.
Great. Okay. Thank you. All right, then we'll move on to nine items for future consideration. Okay. Ten announcements.
I have, I just one thing that I wanted to say. I don't know if you're aware of this, but, so the Racine School Board tonight is voting on whether they want to bring forth a five hundred and ninety-eight million-dollar referendum.
Wow. That's it?
We should ask for more, I guess.
So, be very interesting to watch, to see what happened with that. And if they vote for it, then it'll be on the ballot in April. So, imagine how many people are showing up for that meeting tonight?
Well, what's their annual budget? I mean, they're significantly larger than us.
I don't know. Five hundred and ninety-eight million dollars.
It's still a chunk.
With, in a community of less than a hundred thousand dollars, is a lot of money.
Anybody else have announcements?
Our girls varsity basketball team came back from twenty-two down to beat South Milwaukee Friday night in South Milwaukee.
Boys swimming had the Shorewind Invite on Saturday, which consisted of a lot of powerhouses in the state, especially in Division Two where they are. It was very tough. There were a lot of fast swimmers. We ended up taking seventh, which in retrospect actually was pretty good considering we didn't have any divers. Franklin ended up winning only because they had sixty-five points from divers. But, the swim team goes on Saturday to Plymouth for Small School State, which is pretty much any team that at all is going to have any kind of contention in state will be there. So, that'll be a tough one. And obviously, there's basketball in Milwaukee Lutheran tomorrow. And the big ones are on Friday against Greenfield.
Okay, I've got some shout-outs. First of all, how about that One Hundred Years of Broadway, which was a great show, if you got to see it. If you didn't get to see it, you kind of miss out. But, it was fantastic. A large class. That production is put on by one of the high school classes, which is like a musical theater class. And the kids were fantastic. It was just a fantastic show. And so, huge thanks to the students and to Mr. Weiscriber and his team who put that show together.
Cardio.
Huh?
I mean, those kids cardio.
Oh, the choreography was just.
Cardio. I mean, they were going.
They were everywhere around that stage. It was, it was a lot of movement and a, a lot of involvement. Everybody more or less was involved in every song almost. So, it was, it was really interesting to see.
Next up, I'd like to give a shout-out for Junior Achievement Biz Town. I was able to go with the Edgerton fifth graders to Junior Achievement Biz Town. And so, huge thanks to all the families who volunteered. It takes a big volunteer effort to pull that off, and to the Edgerton teachers, and to Hale's Corners Elementary, because they've been doing it for, I think, like six years. And so, great program, just a really nice program, and I was just super pleased to participate in that. Whittnall Dance, I believe, is going to state, and they recently had a high score on their hip-hop routine. And then, last but not least, thanks again once to, congratulations to Colin and Spencer on their Eagle Scouts, which is a really special thing.
I think, I think tomorrow night is the last dual meet of the season for the swim team. Is that right? It's Wednesday. I'm sorry, Wednesday. It's Monday tonight, isn't it? I get my days messed up. So, yeah, Wednesday night is the last dual meet for the swim team, for the boys swim team. So, it's Cudahy, five o'clock.
I have three February dates that I want to make sure you have on your calendars. February sixth, which is going to be our first expo. What did Logan just say? Yes? Expo. And it's going to be expanded just from eighth grade registration into a community event. So, we're really trying to encourage our community commit. There's going to be some performances in the small gym in addition to some presentations. All of our teachers, students will be here sort of highlighting and displaying some of the work they're doing. So, English, math, science, our co-curriculars clubs and everything. So, that is open to the community. We're trying to promote it. It is our first one, so we know that we'll build from there, but please promote it. It's not just for registration for eighth graders, it's for all parents for registration purposes, but also to highlight and sort of showcase some of the work our students are doing. So, February sixth. Six to eight. If you have an incoming freshman, though, five thirty to six in the auditorium is a presentation to hear about registration information. I think two of you are parents, so you can do the five thirty-six, but everybody else can come as a community member from six to eight. So, you get to see dance, cheer, jazz, choir perform, in addition to some information about the honors program and all of that. So, it's a, it's a whole fun thing. We're trying to get the community and everybody involved. So, that's February sixth. Second one is Tuesday, February twenty-fifth. In conjunction with the Rotary Club, we are bringing in, doing a presentation on human trafficking, anti-human trafficking and what that means. Part of that will be a victim, a former victim, hearing her story. We're also, our Greenfield Police, social worker, a judge, a panel of people to talk a little bit about that. We had a speaker come in and talk to our freshmen about what to look for in their friends. This is for, to look, what, what are some signs to look for in what that, so that's in the auditorium, six thirty on Tuesday, February twenty-fifth. Then, on Saturday, February twenty-ninth, if you haven't yet gotten your Falcon Fest tickets, there is still time to do that. They're very reasonably priced, and it's being held at, right in our community, at Clifford's. So, three February dates, if you can remember all of those.
I want to, I don't know how many people, if anybody has seen, Mr. Rummage and his group is selling coasters that they've made and cheese boards and whatnot. So, I ordered a set of coasters that has a Whittnall W on one side and the Falcon on the other. And these were all designed and made by our Whittnall students, so reach out to Mr. Rummage. I think they're great. The, the school store I know is offering more items and they're bringing up more things, so feel free to stop in or reach out to him if you have any questions about what they have available. Thank you to all the families and parents that volunteered and to the custodial staff and Todd for everything they did. We hosted a middle school conference tournament two weekends ago for wrestling, and then the Zelinski Tournament this past weekend. Every year, they do a phenomenal job of setting up. And obviously, the custodians, they do it all behind the scenes typically, and they don't get a lot of recognition for what they do. But, we're really fortunate to have them. They bust their plots. They do a lot of great work for us, so we're really fortunate. Huh?
Plowing.
Yeah, plowing. Yeah, that's true. And then, to piggyback what you said, we have Wrestling Conference Championship on Wednesday night at Peewakie against Peewakie, so that's going to be fun. And then, I think that's it. Okay. So, then we'll move on to item eleven, motion to adjourn to close session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five-one-C to discuss a administrative superintendent mid-year feedback and B superintendent contract. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Roll call, vote. Nancy?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Steven?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
John?
Aye.